All of these have been that way. There's a lot to find that sense he was just.
All this October seventh meeting of the Riley County Commission to order, please everybody join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are they ever gonna get done with them? I don't think. Dragon and everything else, when it took to be done like two weeks ago.
One good reason to pray to the blizzard.
That would take forever.
Well, they won't work that day at least.
It's starting to feel more and more like fall.
Love it.
Yeah.
Eighties in the afternoon isn't the whole, but.
No.
But but it's not too bad.
Yeah. Alright, well, we'll start with the public comment this morning. Everybody. And nothing will close our public comments and we'll move right into commissioner comments, Commissioner Cleveland one.
Okay, well, um. Friday morning, we had a fence view up in North County. And uh, these are always interesting, but it was a nice day to be out. It's the right day to start. Uh, Friday evening, went to Manhattan High Football Game. It was a runaway from the start. Hey, but it was homecoming game, which is always fun. It's just, by my count, there's a fifty-two total King and Queen candidates, the way they do things. Every, every club gets to nominate two people. There are fifty-two people.
Okay.
Or seven. Um, but it gets to participate. Yeah. And Saturday morning, North County Republicans met in Leonerville. Uh, Rich Vargo gave a presentation on what's involved in the elections and election security and. Answered questions from folks and then uh, Shiloh. Not a spell, obviously, spoke about the treasurer's office and some of the challenges the state puts on them. And then Brad Starnes, the candidate for the state senate, spoke on what he would need that elect. That's all I got. Okay.
Okay, well, um, Thursday evening, our meeting was held in Raleigh. Um, some community members attended, which I was happy to see. And the mayor gave an update on upcoming events. Um, Friday went on the fence, I too went on the fence viewing up in North County. Um, the two parties came to an agreement at the property at the time, and we'll see what goes forward. Um, Saturday morning, I attended the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for state senate candidates. Um, it was about an hour long, yes, and really good questions were asked by the league and then the attendees um. Um, submitted questions too, so it was, it was a good, um, good event. Sunday afternoon, I reviewed the agenda and documents today for today's meeting and reviewed other paperwork. I kind of took it easy over the weekend. I wasn't feeling all that great, but I don't know if there's sinuses or cold or what, but it's still kind of lingers, whatever it is. So. Anyway, that's it for me.
Okay, well, Friday morning, I too attended the fence viewing up in the north part of the county, um. On this one, we should be able to find a pretty applicable solution that's sounding that way, so. In terms of some kind of a functional fence that'll meet the needs of everybody involved with both properties. Uh, also Friday morning, I listened in on the K-State Research and Extensions Friday E-call called USD Programs for Your Community. Um, State USD Program Director Christie Davis discussed many programs and opportunities available. Through the USD designed to help local and rural communities here in the state of Kansas. Friday afternoon, I met with several members of the public to assess the Health Department and the Open Directors Position. Several of the other programs that are attached to it, um, had a very good dialogue, was able to answer some questions and concerns. I think that's why everybody wanted to meet. Um, Saturday, I headed up to Fort Riley for their twenty twenty-four uh, Fall Apple Day Festival. Always great to get to uh, walk around and just catch up everything that's uh, up on the base and walked around through both museums. They were open. Um, had all kinds of stuff going on, horses, guns. Demonstrations, pie, they named it, they had it. It was good, so, pretty good day and it was pretty packed. I think every year. Picks up steam just a little bit more, so it's always good to hear. And for me, um, pretty much spent the rest of the weekend just watching some football and catching up on some items at home and preparing for the upcoming week. That's all I got.
Ready for business commissioners? First time I have the motion to approve supplemental agreement number two for professional engineering services with SMH Consoles from University Park Waste Water Lagoon Facility.
I don't know any questions.
I moved to approve the uh, supplemental. Pardon me, moved to approve the supplemental agreement number two for University Park Waste Water Lagoon Facility with SMH.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the supple- supplemental agreement number two, the University Park Waste Water Lagoon Facility with SMH. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next commissioners, I need a motion to approve change order number one with icon structures for the fourth floor Plaza East Building. Riley County Elections Office renovation project and the amount of a deduct of seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for new contract sum of four thirty-nine five hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there something not done or what was the?
Or contingencies.
The remaining contingencies.
And did they just get the roof? Fixed?
We're hoping. We need a good rain.
Who knows, huh?
Right now, I think we have, we found the issue.
Oh, okay, good.
It functions well in extremely dry weather.
It's dry.
He's dry, I'm good. I'm okay.
Okay, well, I would uh, make a motion to approve change order number one, um. And the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the election remodel project.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve change order number one for a deduct seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the elections remodel project. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. That room took a lot of time of Jerry and John and appreciate their work on it. They did do a lot of investigation and we're hoping the last repair works, hoping.
It can leak here and run here and.
That's what was happening, you know, for sure.
Where it comes through is.
Water will find the weak spot. You know, so.
Thanks for that.
They have a roof straight.
Yeah, something. That's for sure. Next commissioners have the highway use permit for Schultz, uh, twenty twenty-four dash zero one three, City of MHK.
That's a highway use permit?
Yep, it is.
Where is Harwood Road?
Uh, on the way to Zendale?
Yeah, down Highway eighteen.
Go across the Vito, take the left.
Okay, I couldn't see it on the map, but it didn't show.
Kind of that low, goes to the low area down towards the river there.
Yeah, the city, city has some far ground that they leave down there supplying water to it.
Now back, we'll find that. What do we call valley? Greenhouse.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Those fields after they.
That's where it is.
Disperse their sludge, isn't it? Water treatment.
That's what I wondered, that's what I thought that was. I'd move to approve the highway use permit, uh, granting City Manhattan permission to complete the work as outlined.
I would second that.
We've moved to second to approve the highway use permit, granting the City of Manhattan permission to complete the work as outlined in the permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next commercial, I rally getting employee action forms. We have Willie Vella, Trevor Zinkus. Mason Schmitz and Daniel Beard, all volunteer firefighters separation service, and then we have Mary Mertz, New Hire, Election Day Worker Elections Department. All three, please sign.
That we only ball festival is this weekend.
It's coming out Saturday.
This, this Saturday.
Actually, good weekend to have it with the game being so late, you know, it's not going to impact it, you know, because that's always the.
Always, always make sure it's an away game or.
But being so late will help too, you know?
What time is it again?
Nine fifteen.
One year they had an afternoon game and somebody. I think it was Twin Valley or somebody set up a.
Oh, good.
Street for people to watch.
Any changes to the minutes, commissioners? Bless you.
Everything.
Say anything. Um, I would make a motion to per the minutes from our October third meeting.
Second.
Been moved to seconded to approve the minutes as written from the October third meeting of the Riley County Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tentative agenda, okay, commissioners?
Yep.
Any items for next week's press conference? Of course, I'll be on there once again.
Um, I don't know. We still haven't.
Okay, I won't be on. I'll be there though.
Yeah.
We still have an joint city-county meeting on the.
Yep.
On the tenth, what's on the agenda?
Uh, update on the riverfront and Casa Community Clinic.
Oh, okay. I saw they have a big sign up over there on the building. Looks really good. Are they gonna do a, a opening? I'd love to see what they did inside.
I would assume so.
Next commissioners, you have Mr. Holman at nine o'clock.
Is that city-county meeting, is that here or there?
I, I think it's here.
Is that here? Okay.
I think that's what it's saying.
But it's not saying. It's a joint city-county, county meeting. Oh, okay, so the two counties. City, county, county meetings is here. What might they have a history thing, what it keeps to talk about?
Yes, I know, yeah.
I want to go to that.
Yeah, it says it's county office.
It's incredible, amazing history, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I see. No, I don't think she did. This, but like there's some tens and fifteen years and. Five. My favorite. The art anymore. Twenty, yeah, there are years.
I think they're in the order, so some of these, I don't know, it's a little, it's a file, it's convenient.
Yeah, these are starting twenties and fifteens. Well. Twenty years.
Seventeen. Guy, eleven, people let him work for seventeen years, that's long.
Long, definitely. Oh, Richard's.
Twenty-eight. I think it's twenty-eight, his position. Yeah, he's a treasurer, couple years.
That's why I did this and stamps. People look for us that long.
Yeah. The least we could do.
Yeah, yeah. Thirty years. They were spinning every thirty years too. It's too young for it. These are dedicated people.
Just six, two more family. Oh, yeah, that's that extension that can get them to work.
Oh.
She's in GIS.
Oh, is that, oh, okay. Yeah, sure. I see her out at Wildcat Parker, she just lives right at the corner. When you turn there, she lives right down there. Comes up, she's got some cars in the SS. It's that talk for a while. Never really said for any of the time to talk to her.
Good lot of that.
Yeah.
I mean, three hundred people, they're right.
Oh, yeah, it's hard to, that many years, yeah. Guess we made him at the. Employee.
Haven't realized Colorado had a bye week this week too.
Yeah.
Yep.
How are they doing?
They're getting better. They're getting better. They've got some athletes. For sure.
They don't have any defense, but.
And I hope their run defense is really not good and.
It hasn't been so far.
Control the clock and. Get Giddens going.
Yeah, the top of the standings in the Big Twelve were. Iowa State, Colorado, BYU, and they're all.
Texas Tech.
And, oh, yeah, Texas Tech. Hey, Chuck.
Yep.
Man, one in five with all the accolades they were getting ever since the end of last year.
Well, they have their stadium.
They may not have a stadium at all.
Yeah. They're gonna raise money now.
Stop construction.
A lot of times that that helped me is they went to prevent defense, which prevents you from winning.
Although this week they play Houston, so that's their best chance to win.
Richard, you said that, I just have flashbacks to Marty's shot.
Oh, uh, me, I saw Phil Snyder teams do it so many times here. I, I particularly remember, I forget what year maybe John remembers, against Colorado here. We were hit by twenty-one points in the fourth quarter and blew it because we went to prevent defense. Oh, that was painful to be there. I was at that game, the night game.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
I think that was ninety. Four, nine five?
Oh, I was, uh, that was brutal to watch.
Ride the horse that run. Got a clean possession lead. Why change?
I agree.
No, I think that's for the one at the end.
Yeah, you know, the end. Yeah, you know, the end.
Trying to sneak one in on us.
Right. It's a good idea, but no, not this kind of morning commissioners. Lance Holman, Raleigh County Councilor. He had before you the most recent private acquittal agent for the time period. Very much matters. Plenty of keepers busy. Even three lawyers. Mexican three months.
Gets how many days? I've got it.
Got it written down. And committed it to America. But nothing in particular I wanted to call your attention to on here. If you have any questions about any of these projects or anything on going, we'd be glad to. Address it. I do appreciate the board's cooperation in pending the dispute on my strategy. It was a day best accommodating everybody involved. I thought it was an interesting discussion.
Yeah.
Get both sides of the dispute. We'll be talking about it again. And as I told, the parties to this. There won't be a surprise when the order comes out because they will be notified. It will be announced and I'm going to be. What's the point besides? Evaluate what it's a chance to evaluate what you heard. Develop an order, put it on the schedule and let them know. As you know, we do this, we do it as a courtesy. There's nothing, it's much like when anybody for public health. A matter of interest around the board, the right is to attend to me. So when that order comes out, it will not be purposes. It will not be a totally here. It will simply be the issuance of your order based on your. Can't hurt to emphasize that for everybody's benefit. Do you have any questions on anything on project? That's all I have. Sorry to say, no executive session. With the rest of the time.
It always makes me sad when we don't have.
I can say I'm disappointed, but I'm not.
Next commissioners, we have Heather Germain at nine point.
Get a chance to sign those.
I'm letting them stamp.
Are you?
Yeah. By the time I try to get through, although you can't, won't be able to read my handwriting, so there's.
I mean, it didn't take too long. I was getting a little weary at the end, but it's kind of neat to go through all the.
Well, I'll never write a book. I don't want to sign those either.
I don't know about writing, but.
That's all I heard, yeah. They even said at some point, maybe cap five.
At a hundred and eighty miles an hour in the eye, but they say the eye is relatively small considering. But still.
So I checked, it was still a tropical storm.
Rapid acceleration.
I don't think it's supposed to make landfall until two to eight.
Holding you to it. My sister lives in Florida. I'm holding you to it.
Where's she at?
She lives near Jacksonville.
At least it's on the.
Yeah, they lost power with this last one.
Yep.
I have a sister in Maladora.
Where's that at?
Around between Orlando and Tampa.
Oh, okay. He's heard her.
Like even girl, I mean, she was, it was like, well, I didn't, she, I asked her how fast and she said, oh, you've been at Kansas.
Well, that's out of the daily center fall off.
That all jumps start our strategic planning, huh?
Yeah, pretty quick.
Fifteen somebody's back all the way up in the nursing home. That wasn't counting the last one.
I think I'm thirty and like. I think I'm thirty, I believe, on Republican second.
Okay.
Put in there if you have any questions.
I think they, I think they save all their. Seventeen. Put it downstairs. Order. Well.
They're stronger to give us each night. And go and break the old concrete back, you know. Behind my parents. What we did not know is that in nineteen sixty, they built this thing. We're concrete must have been like one centicentimeter or something before. They had a, yeah, pressure.
Overkill for a patio.
Well, I'm like, we're trying to do slits on this thing.
I didn't, I didn't do it.
So I saw if there's new flavors for all time. You get any of those.
I haven't gone through all of it yet, but I will.
Yeah.
So much, obviously. I don't know, house guards. Yeah. Do you? And so we got obviously. Thanks. I'm not very good. Yeah. Keep your hand off. We've not made plans. There's going to be about eight or nine. And we've got to clean here.
Yep. That's what happens in a given ice.
Yeah.
Oh, Lisa, Jack can stop for a while.
Oh, she's it.
The doors. Hey, we ready? Fantastic.
Hello, I'm Heather Gerben. I'm the administrator at Leonardville Nursing Home. And again, this year we are applying for a grant for a bus for our facility. We were not awarded it last year, but I'm going to keep trying to. Um, I have a letter. It's the exact same letter you guys signed last year. And I brought two copies so that I can link one with you guys. And take one. Oh, they we can do yours, do.
I'm on Commissioner Letterhead.
Yep. There you go. Um, I we appreciate your support. Um, I did realize when I wrote the letter that I uh. We are one of seven mentor homes now, so five, but well. We'll take the additional mentor homes, I guess. Thanks. Do you guys have any questions? Okay. That's all I got.
Well, we'd make a motion to approve the letter of support for a grant application for the Leonardville Nursing Home.
One second. Moved and approved to find a letter of support for a grant application for the Leonardville Nursing Home. All in favor? Fine. All three please sign.
Doesn't look like they're moving east.
Yeah, it sounds like it usually, but that last one, there's right.
Right.
Doorstep.
Yeah. When I started talking to Clancy, went on.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Press Conference nine thirty.
Here. Something like this.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm hearing them all. Even other messages from right.
Oh. He's blocked.
Not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah. He's going to turn it off.
Oh, yeah, man. Fuck up. They're from preview because there's no preview or install for it. I mean, interesting, you know, my home. Computer last night. People. Want to verify information that they have some big pension sitting on that floor. I was.
Yeah.
They're out of Canada or something. Oh, good. This is real good.
Yeah.
Well, then. It's a very long time. I think they have all this information. I guess that's Google.
That's an article.
Well, I haven't.
Talking about his new show. And it's going to be. It's a. In focus didn't make money, so it needs something to do. Well, makes more money.
How is that one?
I don't know. Cause they commercials during that. It didn't make sense. Yeah.
That's not good.
But they got three primary sponsors. But it'd be more not just community interests. It's more end of what's going on.
I bet was.
Yeah.
There's been a really good collection of people to communicate with. And we have.
Mm hmm. It's kind of a good action with radio.
I think so.
Thank you.
No worries. Didn't want to thank anyone.
Yeah. That's I just give you all.
I've been living at it online. Those are the toys. Poison.
Yes.
I remember two of them.
It's my birthday, so I wonder you'll see.
Did you see? It's had the latest. I've got the latest circulation.
Mm hmm. That I did forward that to him.
Down from last year.
Oh, it's cool. Well.
I know, but that's what's so funny is that it's supposed to be our media outlet. And so we haven't spent how much money to get to less than ten percent of our community.
We think that have you heard? Um.
Just need a vote.
Is that cheap?
Oh, yeah.
I were on.
He's mentioned it before.
Cool.
This is. On the classifieds. All this. I would know. Yes, that's what.
They over must.
That's true. An attorney's for law since September.
There are some accounts that are testing just their website.
That's. Yeah. Second county is trying to. So. Okay, thanks you.
I'm ready.
All right, let's do it.
Um, don't have a lot today. Uh, Cap French is unable to attend. He didn't pass on the meeting this morning. They didn't have a significant update. We're going to continue to kind of flip flop if that's okay. So if you have a facility updates, uh, what's going on in corrections, which is generally they got a lot going on. So this will be kind of helpful. Um, we uh, just left a our oath and bidding ceremony. Hired two new police officers today. They got sworn in, so excited about that. And dispatcher. Um, we've got multiple hiring processes going on right now for police officer and correctional. So we're going to do one here in a few weeks. So just got an update on that. Uh, staying busy uh, through Aggieville. Still got a lot of stuff going on there as far as with cameras and the road restrictions. Kind of ironing that out. We're in the city. Pretty hard to uh, and ADA to uh. Uh, figure out the best way to do that. But so far, I've been very pleased with uh, how it's helped uh, with safety and um. Uh. For pedestrians and traffic and bar clothes and all of that. So we're gonna off to get started. The big thing that I wanted to hit today was on Thursday. I wanted to have everyone be aware of our community night out. Um, that is occurring on Thursday, October tenth. From four P M to seven P M. In Seaco Park. I have that in Seaco uh, for several years if we get it at all. Um, and this year we're very excited that we are combining it with our fiftieth anniversary of our consolidation. Nineteen seventy four. So it's a big year for us. So we're kind of trying to do both those things at the same time. Um, going to be serving a meal during the event. It's going to be a carnival type of event. So family friendly. Uh, and have lots of displays out. And uh, we just really, really hope that we can get a good a good turnout. Uh, everyone in the community to come as much as they can. Um, the out of us going to be uh, delivering to uh, Seaco. So transportation or whatever, just a reminder on that. But I'm going to have it where the carnival typically is in that area for the fair every year. So plenty of parking. Um, I'm I like Seaco Park a lot, so I think that's a cool place to do it. And I would open really hoping to have a big turnout.
What time did you say that was?
Four P M.
Four to seven.
Yep. So you anybody that wants to can kind of come out there after work and get a meal. And then see some cool stuff. Up inside, so. And that's all I got. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, I'm going to break to another. Morning.
Good morning.
Very guys, so I'm Riley County Extension Horticulture Agent. And want to encourage people to participate in our program on Saturday. It's on November twelfth. Uh, we'll be talking about fall colors, enjoying the fall season in our horticulture world. Whether it be changing of the colors of the leaves or some of our fall blooming plants. So we'll talk about all things that are going to be attractive. Each an hour coming soon. Starts at ten o'clock. It's at Little Mill Nursery in the Garden Center. And um, just uh, people getting into with the fall. Can maybe think about planting. There's still time to plant some of these plants. It's a good time if you're buying something, whether it's blooming or fall color to see it personally. Uh, before you plant it. Of course, seasonal conditions affect the fall colors. So right now, not looking like we're having great fall being dry as hot as it is. Get some moisture would be nice. Cooler temperatures would be ideal for a fall color. Begin this Saturday. At ten A M, Blue Hill Nursery. Talk about fall gardening. Just a highlight. Yesterday was our tree walk on campus and about fifty five people were there. Weather was nice. Nice for to have some moisture in the ground. Otherwise, it was a good choice. Thank you.
Yeah. Miss Ethan.
All right. Good morning. So Ethan Sylvester, Riley County Extension. I'm the Ag and Natural Resources Extension Agent. I just want to invite you all to. Our Harvest and Hope Marketing Tips Program on October fourteenth. So this is the first part of a one part series to kind of help our producers in Riley County. Be able to better understand the economy, the marketing. As you all know, agriculture is has a lot of fluctuation. Margins can be really tight and they can be really. And the intent is to help our producers better understand how they can. Leverage the market, what's happening in the market to better sell their commodities and their livestock. So on October fourteenth, we're going to be focusing on the livestock portion. And fine refreshments will be served. This will be in the farmhouse in Riley from six to seven thirty P M. And I invite you all to attend. Okay.
Rich.
Commissioner Rich Martin, Riley County Clerk. Want to remind everyone of the upcoming November fifth general election. Uh, voter registration for that general election closes October fifteenth. Very important date for all those young voters that are first time voters to uh, understand the process. And for you to go and participate for your vote to be counted in advanced voting, which starts October sixteenth or on election day, November fifth. You first have to register to vote. So I encourage everyone to go out there and register to vote prior to October fifteenth. Uh, as I stated, uh, advanced voting will begin October sixteenth. Have a traditional location on ten courthouse Plaza or House Office Building on the second floor. And also uh, for presidential election, general elections only, but also have an advanced voting location at Kansas State Student Union in the Bloom Off. So encourage people to go out there to our websites to uh, look at their sample ballot. I think a lot of people just general everyday voters are surprised by the length of this ballot every cycle. Has all federal state offices that are on there, all county positions except for one county commission district. And then the retention of judges, I'm sure surprises a lot of people because it makes it a rather lengthy ballot. Multiple pages to go through on the machines. Also, for advanced voting, the last day to request or to apply for an advance ballot by mail is October twenty ninth. So those are all important dates for everyone to remember. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
You're trying to get Bob Isaac at nine forty.
I think he didn't say say that. Program was for it, but. Fine house. Wasn't.
Monday. It's Monday.
Monday.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Oh, there it is. I see it. Boy, everything's jammed up.
It is.
That's good. Better bomb.
What?
Better bomb.
It's actually shaking the desk.
Wow, coming from you.
It's a little lock.
What? It's it's out here. Bob. Yeah, it's out here.
I see that. That's true. It's so good.
I think the door is coming out.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Uh we can officially Riley County, I made an application with Riley County, planning and development seeking approval for a special use authorization. To allow for the construction and operation of a rural fire station on and up at a track. Then to also plant that track into a single lot. The subject site is generally located approximately two hundred and sixty feet northwest of the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Highview Drive. On the west side of Lakeview Drive. The site is in the general vicinity of University Park and is currently owned by the University Park Improvement District. The subject property was never planted as part of University Park. So the uh county is moving forward with the acquisition of the point three acre subject site for construction of a new fire station serving the University Park area. Site for the new station is being transferred by the University Park Improvement District to the county. Part of the agreement between the county and the improvement district. The county is proclaiming the existing University Park Fire Station located here. Um to the improvement district, the county is anticipating closing on the transfer of the uh site. Uh I believe this week, uh the new fire station facility is considered a public facility. This requires a special use authorization due to the size of the tract to be conveyed. Property is required to be planted. Subject property has been zoned agricultural since at least nineteen seventy-eight. There are no variances, conditional uses, or other special uses associated with the site. The Riley County Fire District will continue to serve the site, the nearest nearby county fire station. Is the University Park Fire Station. Of course, that's something you're shortly. The subject site is located within Fire Road Mall, the fire station. Okay, so this is the site plan and preliminary plan combined. It meets all the requirements for a same plan and cover and type in going off of it. The stock and demo space is built into this simple layout of the site showing the building entrance and parking area. Over this block, we'll have directed access to Lakeview Drive. Building will connect to University Park Central Sewer and Water Systems. The existing University Park water line that transsects the post lot will need to be relocated to the right away of Lakeview Drive. Uh the proposed parking area will consist of all with a service. And this is the final platform property, those the thirty point line dedicated by rural right away. As required by Article seven of the Riley County Land Development Regulations. Because public facilities are permitted within the agricultural zoning district, the site was not required to be reserved. The request was reviewed with the two thousand nine vision, twenty twenty-five Riley County Plan. Specifically developed guidance system of chapter twelve. First element of the D G S is conformance to the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. Chapter ten of that uh that plan addresses the need for public facilities and services. Are necessary to serve the citizens of Riley County. And this is what it states here. The overall goal of the chapter is to ensure the efficient provision and utilization of public facilities and services. With the objective of appropriately locating public facilities in rural areas. The second element is the future land use map. According to the plan, the subject property is okay with or not okay within a designated growth area. The third element is the LISA, uh which is short for Land Value Evaluation Site Assessment. And due to the nature of the request, LISA was not generated. And finally, a hardship factor, the applicant did not express that an unnecessary hardship would be incurred if the request were to be denied. Believe that uh something like this is built in. Uh staff concluded that the request is consistent with the goals and objectives of a plan. The request was also reviewed with the Riley County Land Development Regulations. As like a variance, regulations provide specific criteria for decision makers to uh to consider. And according to the Riley County Land Development Regulations, the board of county commissioners must make finding a special use is consistent with these criteria. Uh staff has included the criteria in the staff report along with staff analysis for each criteria. Uh staff concluded that the request needs more seats to these criteria. He picks up the site, see, uh this is looking northwest along Lakeview Drive, round two lane local road maintained by Sherman. Uh no new or existing bridges are included with this request. Commit will be required for a new entrance with the back to the site. Uh this is the subject site flagged out, uh and existing water main mentioned. Uh cuts through across the eastern portion of the site to which the new fire station will connect. And that line will be moved to the right of way line of the road. Uh the red building and in the background is the existing fire station. It's mentioned previously as part of an agreement between the county and the improvement district. The county is planning this building to the improvement district for the land to be built uh for the new fire station. Uh so since it's relatively flat and without trees, uh what little slope there is uh will be in the south, yeah, west corner of the property will be great to accommodate the building and parking area. This picture is the location of the lot corners with the orange flags and the location of the existing water main and the blue flags. Uh this is standing at the southwestern corner of the lot looking north. Uh the site plan shows that the building will be as close to the corner as possible. Which may give some perspective as to the proximity of the neighboring residences. And finally, this is standing at the same location of the east toward Lakeview Drive. The site plan also shows the proposed building as far from the street as possible. On September ninth, the Riley County Planning Board unanimously forwarded a recommendation of approval for a special use authorization to the Board of County Commissioners. Was determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Riley County Sanitary Code. Uh the board also approved the concurrent plan of Riley County Fire District number one, fire station one ten. As it was determined that it met the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Sanitary Code. That staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request for a special use authorization. Allow for the construction and operation of a rural fire station based on the following findings. Has been determined request meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the Riley County Sanitary Code. And is in general performance with the comprehensive plan. Staff also recommends that the Board of County Commissioners acknowledge the approved final plat of Riley County Fire District number one, fire station one ten. As it was determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Sanitary Code. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, but feel free to follow. We do have a my law on this. There's not free to sign at your leisure.
I don't have any question.
Need a motion. Actually, I think. Want to especially using one for the plat.
I move to approve resolution one zero zero seven twenty-four approving the request for a special use authorization to allow construction and operation of a rural fire station. It's been determined that meets the minimum requirements of Riley County Land Development Regulations and Riley County Sanitary Code.
I would second that.
But moved and seconded to approve resolution one zero zero seven two four approving the request for a special use authorization to allow the construction and operation of a rural fire station. Determine that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the Riley County Sanitary Code. All in favor?
Alright. Okay. Okay, um next I would make a motion to approve resolution one zero zero seven two four. Acknowledging the approval, approval of the final plat of Riley County Fire District number one, fire station one ten. Accept any easements, rights of way or licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat. As it was determined that it meets, meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Sanitary Code.
I'll second.
We moved in second to approve resolution one zero zero seven two four. Acknowledging the approved final plat of the Riley County Fire District number one, fire station one ten. And accept any easements, right of ways, or licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat. As it was determined that it meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Sanitary Code. All in favor?
Alright.
All three sign both please, and then don't forget the my law.
There's no advantages.
Yeah, no, that's it. Don was asking when the heck they can be done with this. I forget the end date.
I know they're moving to cross street.
Can't come soon enough. They are. They're over there now. They weren't this morning, but they're over there now.
Surprise windows.
Yeah, I know. That'd be okay. It would just replace them. Don't forget the my law camera.
He said it sounds like a cow, as she's.
Thank you. I see a typo as well.
That's the typo I'm fixing.
That's a unique name.
Where is it?
Well, there was the person by that name. Was not well liked, whereas you are.
Well, that depends on me.
I'm sure some people like that guy.
Uh evidently it's someone he knows.
Said we can. And I could tell you it was not a Freudian slip. That was just.
Yeah, Clancy just handed it to me this morning. I just grabbed it. Didn't even look at it.
Clancy and I've worked around that other ridge for two decades.
Both.
It's stuck in there.
Okay, go ahead, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present an art fund update. Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present an ARPA funds update. Uh with all of the projects and new estimated project costs. Um so. Of course, you're well aware, um when we first brought in the money, we got fourteen eight and four hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Through September, we have collected one million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. In interest, bringing, you know, our total to fifteen million eight fifty-six, six fifteen. And then I listed out all of the projects below and marked which ones were complete. And little cost expenditures there. And then we've obviously dedicated eight hundred thousand to keys, which we have started to spend. The others are for EMS headquarters, and so this was the guaranteed maximum price. And other items, um so like IT, uh furniture, stuff like that, that was listed out. And then, uh, the UP fire station that was just approved. Again, that's an estimated amount, that's two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We're still working on. If that's a hard number, or it needs to be learned into that. Um, the one that increased the most was the emergency management remodel. Originally, we were only budgeting a million dollars. We, I don't think we really knew what was going to, how much that was going to cost. Um, and now project estimates have come in, and that's over two million dollars. So that's how we are now looking at our remaining balance of the negative two seventy-nine, four nineteen, sixty-one. Any questions on that, or direction if you want me to pay something on CIP?
Where is the, where, why is it so? What were the extra costs on that remodel? Does it, you know, last time I looked at it, it was like half a million.
For the emergency management?
Yeah, it was never a half a million, but that's.
Before we actually had plans.
Yeah.
And they hadn't expanded a little bit.
Lowest I remember is about a million wasn't early on, started out, but that was very preliminary before they even knew, you know, kind of what Russell thought was. Best for them, but.
Yeah.
That's just the reason for my precautionary note when we added the fire station, and I wouldn't say. That you have to commit anything to CIP at this point, because we don't know. Everything may come in under and it may come out okay. And so we still have time, but I. Personally, you know, before the end of the year, just in case things do come in lower than expected, wouldn't mind adding another like. Building renovation project here or something that way, because we have to have it identified by the end of this year, Commissioners, and so that way we don't. As Commissioner McKinley said, even give ten dollars back.
Did we, have we gotten a final on the windows project? Where is that RFP? In this building.
He's still measuring windows, I think, on the third floor.
Yeah, to finish that one, yeah.
EMS, what's other, how much did you have in for other items? That was for IP to run all his stuff and.
It's IT. It's back at my desk, yeah.
IT dollar amount did increase a while back.
A dollar about increased like two hundred thousand for their stuff, and then for one of the other. Projects. No, I'm sorry, it was IT. And there's something else. They, it was like a three hundred thousand dollar increase for some of those things. And that's boring for an updated.
Is also based GMP right now. On it, you know, we've got quite a bit under there. We've got a tendency in there. I just, I want to make sure we know, like he's, I want to make sure we've got enough in there, because it's. They said. Tendencies usually by the time you're out of the ground, most of those are used up that.
Yeah, and that. That was the only reason for my precautionary note when you added the fire station is because. Those were the priorities early, you know, and either way, so like I say, if there's any overage at the end, we'll just have to find money in CIP. Which will, we'll have money.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is, this estimate includes things like IT and furniture. Did you estimate those things in there?
Yes.
Okay.
So once you, if you would, get the board a breakdown of how you got that number. Based on, because she's, uh that, well, Commissioners, you understand why her plate's been so full, but on top of that. Just on these projects, she's been asking all of these department heads for updated numbers, updated numbers, and. Now we even know as of last week, the fire station's probably gonna be more, because we've got to move a water line that we just found out about, so. It's a moving target.
And there's, there's some money in that two seventy-three with the water line, whether it's enough, like Brittany said, we don't know.
I'll send you a copy of the, um, I think it was the architect or the engineer, so I gave that report to John, and I'll, I'll get you a clean copy by the notes all over it. Anything else that you would like me to provide on ARPA?
It was good to see where everything is.
Sorry, just give a monthly update on this, if you would, on your time, that way the Commissioners know and.
Want to review them again.
Just when I need my cash flow, just add.
Yeah, for sure.
And yes, Commissioner McKinley, we do have a spreadsheet that we track all the expenditures, and I, I definitely provide that as well.
Thanks, Brittany. Next Commissioner, we have Amanda Webb at ten fifteen.
Like, we're using all that since all of these. Instead of trying to hide everything.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's what you use one-time money for, is for stuff like this. Because you use it for salaries and everything, then the next year after that, you gotta double your increase.
That's right. That's what city's going through now.
Yeah, I don't think they're done.
And they're gonna do it this year, even this year, they're gonna do it again. Hide stuff.
Yeah.
And your person's coming in this month.
Tuesdays.
Is it Tuesday?
John, I had a flat out at the transfer station before I got unloaded in the. New hire lady out there was very nice and helping give me a jack so I could jack my trailer up and get the tire off, go get a new tire and then come back. And she was really nice, really nice. Yeah, evidently. Evidently, it sliced right in the sidewall, so. I knew, not as. I didn't have a lot of time to get all that accomplished. Disconnect the trailer, jack it up, take the tire off, get into town, get a new tire. Not one thing, it's another.
We can't keep the disposal of the tire too.
No, the tire place took it, so yeah, I mean, they got their charge, you know. I'm just glad they had a tire in stock. Stupid jacks they put in trucks don't lift nothing. And when she had a big heavy-duty floor jack, so that was perfect. It was a big one. She brought it over with the loader. Loading it in my truck, it was a heavy one. That's my three-quarter ton truck, and so it sits up even higher, you know.
But they give me no points. But they give you no points.
Yeah, that trailer I had loaded down too, and so it was heavy, and she had that little handle they gave me to crank it there. I need to order me a better jack to carry in that truck. She told me how we got her from Ham.
Yeah, she worked out there.
Uh huh, that's what she told me. She was really nice.
Yeah, she, she's a good worker.
Oh, yeah, I could tell. And that was prior to her knowing who I was, and so, you know, I was just talking to her, never did say anything, but. When I left, then she was down there with the gal away station who knows me real well, you know, so. Must have been my month for flats. I had a nail in my truck tire too last week, so, you know, working on Blake's placement nails and stuff, I know. I hope I got all those out of my system.
Usually happen in threes.
Oh, I'm just saying, it's in various places that they, that's.
Too bad you couldn't remote control it, you know, and have to drive it down the road. Yeah, I saw that when we were leaving, Leonardville on Saturday. Yeah, I wanted to say something about the diet he's got Dan on, that's a little too far. Figured that's usually your only passenger.
There for a while, then I'm gonna set it out on porch swing in front of.
Gotcha. I think it looks neat in the gar, appropriate time of the year.
You seen the ones where people put them up on their house. So one time somebody put them. A couple of them climbing up the outside, I don't have the head of.
I have seen that, that's pretty neat.
And there was one there in Rockaway, he had, they had paint house, and the other day I hid them. Skelton on the ladder, and then that's gone, but he moved around to the other side, but when he was done painting that day, he set one up on the ladder in front.
It was Pam Woods that worked in the Treasurer's Office for decades. Halloween was her holiday. It was like her Christmas, you know, she really loved Halloween and decorated.
My neighborhood start to go kind of crazy with it. Everybody was out over the weekend, putting all sorts.
Usually, but then seeing those things, you can think of.
Wouldn't want to take it down.
Go ahead.
Here's my planning director. A few things before you this morning, and I hope it's okay to deviate a bit from the agenda to your RPA schedule resolution first. Updates to make sure we get that one done. It should only take a couple of minutes, though. Um, so I have before you is, um, an updated fee schedule and resolution. Development, uh, if you folks recall, we last did a revision to the fee schedule. Last year, and it was adopted in March twenty twenty-three. Um, we just discovered that one of the fees that we don't use a whole bunch is actually written form. Under the table on our previous resolution, it just got missed. So, so there's no new, new fees, this is not a new fee, this is not, there's, there's no changes to the fees we. Charge or anything like that. It's just getting it back from the resolution. Yeah, in the right spot, you're putting it in the table rather than having it kind of in writing tucked away, so it's a little hard to find, so. But basically what it's about is, um, if somebody applies for a. Um, principal structure, building permit, and accessory structure, building permit simultaneously. We give them basically a key rate essentially, so. If you're applying for, and it happens once in a while, it's not something too common, but it does happen where somebody will submit for their, um. Their new home, as well as maybe, um, you know, a shop or a detached loft or something like that, so. It does happen on occasion, so again, because we're reviewing the same property, so we're reviewing these things at the same time, we, we. Um, you know, we don't charge a full fee for whole permit type. We still need separate building permit applications, just so we can track and we know which. But what we do is we allow the base fee for, um, in charge of the base fee for the principal structure. And then additional fifty dollars for the accessory structure, so it's not a whole one fifty for the secondary structure. So. What I've done is put that in. The, um, table itself, so you'll see concurrent residential principal structure and accessory structure is two hundred. And concurrent personal industrial principal structure and accessory structure is two seventy-five, so that's what that's doing, so. You submit those, to those applications at the same time, that would be your total fee for both products. So you wouldn't have the residential, you wouldn't have the one fifty. Uh, for each, each piece, you would only have to pay fifty for the secondary. Does that make sense? Okay, perfect. So again, we had just noticed. And we've still been doing it, but it's not like we, oh, well, to get included in the fee schedules, you have to pay the whole thing. We've still been doing that only again, rare occasion, we've gotten one, but we've realized that, uh, they got missed, and so I just wanted to. Uh, update the table just for clarity, transparency, so everything's in the way it should be, so. That's all that this update's about. Again, just want to stress, this is not a new fee, this is not a change in fees. This is just getting something back on there that was missed, and just making sure it's clear. Any questions on that?
Questions here? Looks okay.
I've moved to approve the updated planning development fee schedule resolution.
Oh, the second gap?
They moved and seconded to approve the updated planning and development fee schedule resolution, all in favor? All three sign please.
Back to my staff report, if you, if you're ready, or if I didn't know, if you want to. To sign. Um, all right, so I have, I'm planning in developments, that's my staff report, this is for September. And as usual, we start with keys, um, lots, lots of information for keys. Um, so we're still working on, well, I submitted the grant application for the Kansas Water Office, the Water Projects Grant. If you folks recall, they opened a second round and got that in, um, before the deadline of September sixth. I haven't heard anything yet either way, and I haven't heard, um. When they're gonna make the announcements, I'll see about reaching out to some of the folks that I've chatted with or, or keeping contact with at the Water Office and. See if they can let us know kind of the timeframe that they're working out to make those announcements, so. And what we applied for, for that was the whole remaining, it's roughly a million that we were quote-unquote short. And what we applied for for that was the whole remaining is roughly a million that we were quote unquote short. In funding, so we applied for that full amount through their grant program, so. We're just waiting to hear on that, but I'll reach out to them to see if they have a. Uh, time frame. Um, Kansas Water Office, uh, technical assistance grant that we were awarded. Um, everything's been going along with that just fine and have the, um, second quarterly report that I'll be. Um, preparing and submitting to them, um, here before the end of the month and we'll get some reimbursement for a few of the. Um, technical items that we did there as well. Again, everything's going along just fine. Background as well. The USDA required environmental assessment for their funding, um, that has been submitted and accepted by USDA. Um, to complete that process. Now there's a few different documents that were required to, uh, publish in newspaper record. And our soul has been remaining all of that. So they've got the news availability, um, in right now. And then we'll take the, um, Fonzie, which is the finding of non-significant impact. Um, after the fourteen day commentary, the USDA instructs us to do so. So those are just again pieces to kind of finalize the environmental assessment. And then once that's done, we should receive word from them what the grant loans will be. If you recall, USDA has up to forty percent. Grants, um, know that this project could be eligible for, but at this point, we don't know. What percentage of grant it might be. We know for sure we would get the funding. It might be in full loan form from the USDA, but we're just waiting to know. If any of that percentage will be. Um, so that's, that's what we're still waiting for with USDA. We're, we're going along just fine. We're, we're in the process of finalizing that information for them to be able to make that determination. So just, just a lot of kind of hurry up and waiting for information from folks, so. Of course, I will post not everything, so. Field work. I talked to Sam at BG late last week. Um, so all of the utilities, of course, they're. You remember they were doing some utility locates and whatnot in the field. In August and September, they've also of course been doing a lot of office work, but doing the design work, incorporating the survey information into that. So they're gonna update of course preliminary sewer alignment based on the, um. Utilities that have been field located. And then, um, coming up and we'll get this information out to the Keats residents as well, of course. Um, the survey crew will shoot elevations on top of the alignment in the field. And then of course, all that will be incorporated aside. And then any utilities that were not previously located, they still have the opportunity to do that. So they'll continue to. Call in anything that hasn't yet been, um, done so and located and surveyed, so. So, so folks will still be out in the field as well, um, probably next few weeks. Just kind of finishing up some of that. Field survey, so. Any questions on anything we just talked about or anything else keeps related?
When does, uh, when do you get to pass that off? Don't quirks.
Oh, not soon enough, no.
Okay, I mean, usually they handle construction projects.
Right, yeah. So, so I haven't really thought about that honestly, um. You know, I inherited keys when I got here.
I want to let it go.
Well, if you want to keep it, I'm sure.
I'm sure he'd be fine with that. No, um, of course, once, once I've got all the different funding pieces, you know, the grants and the loans and all of that settled. Um, the design work, it, it has to go through a process through K D H E and all of that. So I, I would envision once all of that is settled and it really is, that part's done and it's now time for construction. That's. Still got a little bit, but we're certainly good.
Well, all the corn is harvested off of there now. So it should be a little easier for them to locate these things.
Um, comprehensive plan update, not a whole lot to talk about. We're still working to finalize the contract with the consultant, um. I have talked with them a couple of times, um, during this period, just to make sure once the contract is settled, we're ready to. Just get going and get, get back out there. Um, they're doing some stuff kind of global behind the scenes again to, um, you know, make sure they're ready to go. I've given them, you know, information and, and we've kind of got a bit of a tentative. Um, schedule some of the things they can do, um, kind of in the office for the remainder of the year. We don't really want to, um. Be kind of reopening the public engagement, getting back out there, right in the holidays. That's, that's kind of a difficult time. So again, there's stuff that, that we can do, um, you know, that's not, obviously this is all public. Input engagement, all that, and that will continue. But going back out like to the community and having the workshops and things like that. Will want to wait till after the first of the year, but there's plenty of stuff that we can still. Um, work on in the meantime, and that's what, what we've talked about a few times. So we'll be ready to go and everything, so. Um, strategic planning, I don't know that I need to talk a whole bunch about this. I know we've talked a lot about it. We had some successful, um, the building tour and the retreat days out and the being very warm in that room. Um, it was a pretty successful day. Um, I know I received a lot of positive impact, uh, input. Um, about our consultant themselves. As, as you all know, I don't have to tell you anything. You already know they're great, great folks, great, um, facilitating and getting things. Things going there. We had a lot of good conversation. I should be getting the report from them by the end of next week. Um, with, with all of that information in there. And then of course, we'll get that presented to you folks and then we can kind of talk about what our next steps are and. And what, what the process is after that, so. Um, she did say Molly shot me an email this morning to let me know again that the report will be ready, um, by next week. But did say if there's anything we want to know now, there's, hey, you know, what are you seeing about this or, you know, so and so say about that. We can certainly ask her and she can let us know that information, but the compiled report will be available for us next week, so. So if there's anything you folks think of that you want to know ahead of time, please just let me know and, and I'll communicate with Molly and get that from her. Um, the L A P P grant, the local and mineral protection program grant that we got from K D H E. This is the fifty thousand dollars that we received, um, to help load a moderate income property owners with repair and replacement of their waste water systems components. We had our application window open through the last Friday. We have received five applications. So we're, we're glad that that's an application there. So we'll spend a little bit of time reviewing those. Um, if you recall, we review them, you know, based on need in, um. Um, a variety of different factors based on, of course, the K D H E rank guidelines. And then we'll make those announcements, um, as to awards, um, in the next two weeks. And then based on if we have, uh, monies left over from that, from who's, you know, qualified and whatnot, we'll open another application window. As you know, the intent of this is to spend every. You know, every pi- penny that we can with this. It's, you know, important that we. Um, we're going to be taking a look at those and I'll keep you close on that, so.
What kind of projects are you seeing come in?
Um, we've had a couple that are for full failures of fields. Um, we've had a couple that are, um, tank failures. So definitely a little bit, I mean.
Mainly wastewater types of thing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because we did just wastewater.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Just, just for something, so. Yeah, so, so a little bit, little bit of everything. So, so hopefully we'll be able to, um. You know, get, get people some funding to help that, so. Again, I'll keep getting. Um, let's see. So just another reminder, I'm out of the office October twenty one through November fifth. Um, so we'll move my November staff time to the following Thursday, November fourteenth. Short-term mental information, um, it is now looking on our website. Thank Commissioner McKinley for pointing it out that. It was not there, which is obviously not a good, good idea. So, um, Vivian got everything posted for us. We have all the different criteria, um. The different, um, standards, all of that sort of stuff, and then the application itself. So everything is on planning developments website now, so it's there and available. Of course, folks can always call us or email us or come visit to find more information, but at least it is, um, it's got its own page, um, on our website now. So I have, um. This document here that I'm passing along and I talked to John and Adam. This isn't in my staff report because I talked to him later in the day on Thursday. So I'll be able to get it into the staff report. But you will of course recognize Seaco Park. What they're looking to do, what the city is looking to do is rezone all of their. Out of property to, um, public institutional. I have the, uh, the, uh, picture there of the different ownership with, with Seaco Park. You know, different entities and whatnot. So what the city, again, their city is looking to rezone all their parks to properly match. The zoning that's, that, you know, that should be on there based on what's actually occurring on, on the properties. So right now Seaco Park in all its entirety is zoned, um, low risk, low. Low density residential, which doesn't make a lot of sense, right? It's, it's not going to be housing. It's never been housing. It's been a park for a very long time. It's going to continue to be a park. So. Again, in that manner, it's important to, it's important that the zoning map. Properly reflect what's occurring on a piece property, what's going to be occurring on a piece property. We know it's not ever going to be housing there. It's going to be a park. What they asked, they, and they're going to talk to USD three eighty three as well. They wanted to know if the county was amenable to having their portion rezoned as well. Um, so just wanted to check with you folks, um, to, you know, get, get your thoughts on that. So they have two different, um. Designations within public institutional. One is for parks and public spaces, which this would be. And then of course, just as kind of a tie, just you, because you probably remember just recently that the. Property where the new V M S headquarters is located was just rezone public institutional two. That's for government buildings and whatnot, just to kind of make that correlation. Um, so just wanted to get your input about if you're comfortable with having. Um, the county own portion of Seaco Park rezoned to properly match what's actually happening. So the zoning map is correct. Um, or if you have any concerns on that. Again, it's, it's not going to be housing there, so there's really no negative impacts to having it properly zoned. However, you don't have to do that if you don't want to. If you'd rather just leave it as is. There, there's no requirement. They're just trying to basically clean up their maps, which, which does make sense, so. Wanted to run that by you and if you have any questions or if you have any input for me now. They're going to be talking to their folks in the next couple of weeks. I'm just wanting to take this opportunity since I was going to be before you today. So.
Yeah, when talking about moving, they said we couldn't. Couldn't get rid of that. Leave it as residential. We'd, we'd sell that property. Yeah, because David held the fairgrounds, right?
There you go.
I've got to wait on rezoning until we know what we want to do with Butterfall and all that, but I would say we ought to have. P I two zone. I don't know. It's just that what, what do we want to do? We haven't figured that out. U S D three eighty three, are they going to rezone theirs?
I don't know. I had, John had contacted me and, and yeah, when he and I spoke, when he was going to see what they wanted to do. Again, you don't have to make a decision right now. If you're not ready to, I just wanted to get this in front of you and make you aware of what they're looking at. You know, again, if there are questions that I could pass along or, you know, any, any comments that I can pass along, certainly. But again, don't have to make a decision.
Was just the clouds, everything like solid or something else.
Any comments or questions on that that I passed along to the city?
When's the city doing theirs?
Um, I believe she said the twenty fourth.
Just, I mean, since you just threw it at the board this morning, you might want to get on the agenda and. Ask them about it after they've had some time to think about it.
Um, and then one last thing.
Outdoor warning siren. Just can't get enough noise today.
Um, and then one more thing, um, city related, you'll see in your packet, um, just a, I got this from the, um, city's. Website. They have a lot more information on there available. This is just a housing program incentive program overview. I talked to Stephanie a little bit last week. Um, the city did, um. Adopt or pass or whatnot, their housing incentive program and includes all these different programs that are listed in that, um, overview sheet. Ones that we would have a little bit more, um, you know, participation in, of course, is the R H I D. Which you've heard, um, lots of talk before the last couple of years. Um, we just wanted to make you aware that they did, you know. Kind of, uh, again, create, not create the programs, our state programs, but they did, um, allow for those programs to be used within the city, um. And if you also recall, all three entities, the city, the school district and Riley County, we all have veto power. We all have to quote unquote agree to it. So if something's going along and you have concerns, obviously hopefully that would be worked out ahead of time and you'll have those conversations, but. You know, both, all entities do have that. Um, but she just wanted to make sure we were aware and that, um, you know, I kind of alerted you folks just in case you hear anything or anybody comes to talk with you. About those programs, they are, um, things that the city does allow. There, they do have some basic policy on it again on their website. And then also what she said is a lot of it will be figured out via like development agreement, things like that, based on specific. Specific project, specific proposal. Um, so the policy is a little bit, a little bit generic as it kind of has to be. Um, again, the more specifics will be determined based on. So, and there's a whole process. If you folks remember that, would they have to go through, would be alerted, you would have the time to, to review and. Back, so. Have questions or would like more information on it, you can keep it at the city's website. You know, um, we're needing something, but again, it's more just letting you know that the city has settled on, on allowing these programs and. Just so you're aware, if you start hearing things or get questions from Phil, I'm sure with, so.
Go ahead.
Sit on a chamber committee monthly and, uh, Eric Reed had stopped me at the last one we just had, uh, last week and. That he'd like to get together as a school district in the county to kind of. Discuss policies and processes when these come to us. And so I've got staff working on. Getting with other counties because I know other counties have developed policies on when these are brought to you, what you consider and what you're looking at. To approve or deny, and so they, they will be coming, it sounds like from the city individually, but. I know the school district has some consultants, USD three eighty three.
You mean, you're talking about the housing incentive.
The R H I D. But all of them. So staff's currently looking at what other counties have as far as policies when they're brought to you and what to consider in approving or denying.
Um, and then just one last thing. Um, so if you folks remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the pathways grant. Unfortunately, they weren't able to refine projects to be in every pathway, so. So, um. Though, you know, there's, there'll be opportunity again, um, so, but for now, that, that one will be submitted, so. Of course, we'll keep going on the con fans, I think. Just wanted to let you know about that, so. Any, I think we're almost at time, but any questions or anything? After me? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda. Plan C, how much time on this next one?
Just gonna ask him. Twenty and thirty minutes. Ninety thirty. Right, probably thirty.
And after.
That was we took. Okay, I think more than that, I think, but.
Yeah, it's the voice. Say, I'm trying to get the first string back up here. All right, let's sit here.
He's hiding on the session now, it's all yours.
I guess.
Running out of paper.
Yeah, well, good. Don't put any more paper in. Not one.
I guess.
We can, we can enter into executive session.
Yeah.
As long as she knows we're doing.
Okay, I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, and Commissioner Fochey recess into executive session. On a performance matter of non-elected personnel. An exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act.
Thanks.
With Clancy Holman, Riley County Councilor, Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselor, attorneys for the commission. And with Rich Fargo, Riley County Clerk, and Elizabeth Ward, Human Resource Director. The county commission chambers at eleven ten.
Oh, Elizabeth door.
I would second that.
Good move, I seconded. Uh the commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, and Commissioner Fochey recess into executive session. On a performance matter of non-elected personnel to protect the privacy of the applicants for employment. An exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act with Clancy Holman, Riley County Counselor, Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselor, attorneys for the commission. And with Rich Fargo, Riley County Clerk, and Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director. The open meeting to resume in the commission chamber at eleven ten AM. All in favor, bar. The open meeting to resume in the commission chamber at eleven ten AM. All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
I move the Board of County Commissioners to an executive session.
I would second that.
It moved and seconded the Board of County Commissioners to an executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Move the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session.
I would second that.
It moved and seconded the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Oh, are they done?
Yeah.
The two of us, yeah, two of us.
Knocked them out.
He's finished up, thanks.
I don't have anything else. Good.
Um, I would make a motion to adjourn the October seventh meeting with the Board of Riley County Commissioners.
Second.
To move and seconded to adjourn the October seventh meeting of the Riley County Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.